Okay, I have that at 7:15. We will call this meeting to order. First up, electronic participation. 2.2-3708.3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, permits members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the Board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations. Supervisor Sarah Bone has requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for Monday, May 8, 2023, at 7:15 to be fiscally held at the Government Center of Christiansburg. The reason for the request is being out of town. Members physically present shall vote to agree to allow participation by other Board members requesting to participate remotely. Do I have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Fitchukowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Supervisor Bone, can you hear us?
I can. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. At this moment, at this time, can I ask our county administrator, Mr. Craig Meadows, to lead us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance?
If you're able, let's rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. First up, presentation, recognitions, and awards, and we'll have Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Clark? Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Good evening. I'll mention some of the maintenance things we've been working on here in the last, in the last month, and a lot of it has been patching in front of our paving schedule, which has actually already gotten started in a lot of places, but you see a lot of pipe being replaced. We like to do that before the paving schedule, and so we've already done, like, high-top roads already been done. We're working out on Huffville Road. We're going to do some of 615 at Pilot there, from there to the Floyd County line. It actually continues several miles into Floyd on what they call Christiansburg Pike. I don't have the whole schedule right here with me, but Glade Road is not getting done this year. We had it planned and had the pipe while getting ready to go, but they're always changing how much money we have. It'll be done next year when we're going to get the pipe. It was planned on being done, but we didn't, we're not going to be able to get to it this year. So it's a lot of the, just doing the gravel roads, doing some ditching, pipe replacements, as I said, so a little bit of tree cleanup, and just kind of the normal types of things. The only six-year plan project we have that's going to go, that's going to occur this year is the bit of Craig Mountain Road that we have in between the end of state, end of pavement, and where we did about a half-mile section a few years ago. We're going to connect that about a third of a mile gap, and that'll be our project. This year, we're working on getting Taylor Hollow ready, and we think we have some direction on how we're going to go on Taylor Hollow off of Lester's Gate, and then we're working on the design of Poplar Hollow, which will be the next one that we do after that. So also took a trip with some of the Board members who came out on Saturday, and we drove around for several hours and only still only saw small portions of the county, but we got to see some good stuff. And we'll be looking for resolutions with the Board sometime, end of this month or next month, sometime in June, to decide what the priority planned for the next fiscal year will be. That's it.
Very good. We'll go around the room to see if there are comments or questions. We'll start off with Supervisor Shepherd.
So just to clarify, are they going to replace the pipes this year or not?
I think so. Yeah. We may wait for a bit because we'll make sure we get the ones that are on the plan. Also, we have, a lot of it depends on the, how much pipe we have because, like a lot of other places, things we order sometimes take a while, but I'll let you know when we're going to get to some of those. One was replaced, and I think they just haven't patched over it yet. I know they're all marked and everything.
Waiting a year is probably not a bad thing because a couple of the ones that they replaced this year and then paved over are already sunk.
Yeah.
I guess the compactor, when he laid the asphalt, compacted them down more.
On glade?
No, on long shop.
A long shop. Okay. I'll have to look at that.
Yeah, because they replaced several under Long Shop and Mount Zion.
Yeah.
And then they went over and paved it, and I guess they just didn't have it compacted well enough, and the roller, when they put the asphalt down, surely took it down.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you. Supervisor Demots?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Supervisor Bone?
Um, David, could you explain to the public what the next steps are for Opel Lane and for the, off of Harding Road, the Lester's development, please?
Opel is a private road that the county, we've been putting aside funds for the secondary six-year plan to bring in any, just about any, private road that the county would like to do if it qualifies. So the county, if they would like to proceed with a rural addition, what the official term for it is, we've explored several, we've done a few in the past, but the last one we explored was Big Vane Road, but right-of-way has to work out. You have to get everybody on the road to agree to the right-of-way. We work really closely with county staff on getting that right-of-way, getting drainage easements. So the next step for Opel would be if the county decides that's the one, and I know there's a list of several that people have asked for, the county decides that's the one they would like to pursue, you just let us know, and we'll schedule that with some of the other construction work we have to do. And then I think your other question was some drainage in Lester's Mill, and we have been in contact with the property owner. They did some work on the shoulder that, I don't know if it helped or not, there was some large rock were placed on the shoulder, but we're going to do some ditching and put a new pipe in across the road and ditch on the inlet into that to get the water from crossing right at their property, at that property, and cross it down below that, and we're hoping that will alleviate some of the problem, at least of the water that's falling on the road part itself and then going to the ditches. That'll solve that, that issue.
Can you tell, say what kind of timing there is for that one?
It'll probably be, it'll probably take about a month. Hopefully, hoping to get it in the next month.
Thank you so much.
Hmm?
Supervisor Fitchukowski?
Yeah, I want to start out by thanking you for riding with us because the, it's, when you hear about a lot of these roads that aren't in our own districts, which we all know our districts fairly well, it really benefits us to get a good idea of what's involved, and by having you there riding with us, you can really give us the realistic opinions that, that you've seen through your, your own experience. So we really appreciate that. The only thing that I have is, I know you're doing potholes, and I just wanted to call attention to a few areas. Allegheny Springs Road, just south of Willis Hollow, there's some, but there's quite a few on Allegheny Springs Road that is just north of Forage Road that are, that are pretty bad. Also, on Willis Hollow itself, in the paved section, there were several there that probably need attention, and I was just contacted yesterday about, they said it was a fairly good-sized one, but they didn't give me specific area on George's Run.
Okay.
And I think George's Run normally is, stays pretty free of potholes, so I'm not really sure where that would be, if it would be around Lizard Creek or maybe in another section, but.
Okay. I'll take a look.
I'd appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor King?
Thank you, sir, for being here. Out on Route 8 in Union Valley, where you come off Union Valley on off Union Valley on Route 8, is there something we could do, a study or something to, because traffic's starting back up, and I've heard from several people, it's, their kids are going, trying to get to school in the morning, and if you come out there early in the morning, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Okay. They're coming out of Union Valley, maybe trying to turn left to get to the schools.
Trying to turn left?
Yeah.
Well, if you try to turn right or left.
That's it.
I mean, that's a busy road right there.
Yeah.
Maybe we, maybe we can do some kind of study or something.
Yeah, I've not, probably been out there during the busy time in the morning, but I'll go take a look.
But the work, work they're doing out there now is going really well.
Yeah, 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 for the sidewalk right there.
Sidewalks.
Yeah, in front of the store and everything, yeah. Yep. That's a good, that's a revenue-sharing project that the county is doing, so that's, that's going to be a good, a good project in that sidewalk in front of the, the Riner store. Absolutely.
Yeah. And one more thing, I know last month when you was here, we talked about Paul School Road.
Mm-hmm.
Could you kind of remind?
Yeah, the grading work on that, you mean?
Didn't they go in hard surfaces?
Yeah, it's on the six-year plan. It's.
Right.
It's later on in the plan, and as we get closer to that one, we may have to look into doing that as maybe two or three separate projects because it is a long, a long section.
Right.
But, I mean, we did that on several, we did Yellow Sulphur in several sections, we did Brush Creek Road in several sections, so we get big, long ones like that, we usually like to split it up, but we'll worry about that.
Okay.
You know, when, when it gets closer to time.
All right. Thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Thank you for being here. I don't have any questions, but I really wanted to tell you, I appreciated you being with us for the three-and-a-half-hour ride we went on because your insights were so good, you know, when we were asking all those questions like Supervisor Fitchikowski said. I don't think people know how much knowledge you have there with everything that you've been through, with all the different counties that you cover, and, and I think it's of note that we should mention, what was it, we have 150 miles of unpaved road in the Montgomery County.
Probably close to that, for the whole county, yeah.
Yeah.
Most of them are in the southern half of the county, but you got your share up in the northern half, too. We rode Galleon Ridge, we rode Dry Run, we learned just how long the unpaved part of Willis Hollow is. It goes way back there, as does Taylor Hollow. We didn't even go all the way out to Taylor Hollow. We turned around before we got to the end of Taylor Hollow.
And the other comment I would make relates, I guess, to our bus drivers, I, the school bus drivers. I really sincerely don't know how they drive those buses on some of those roads. It just, it's incredible.
And as, as we talked about today, you get to understand why sometimes those that may live in the, in the town, or even on a paved road, don't understand why school gets called.
Right.
In the winter, but, you know, those paved roads are rarely out in the middle of the sunshine, too, so they're, they're shaded, they stay, they get icy, people, you know, they're the last ones we get to, but people have to get out anyway, so they're packing snow down, it gets icy, and those unpaved roads are, sometimes still get a lot of traffic, and the school buses have to go on just about every one of them.
Yeah. Well, thank you for all you do.
David, I don't have any questions for you, other than that maybe for the next board meeting, we might work on those resolutions, have that ready for you so you can proceed with our priority list.
Okay, and I'll be in touch with administration and staff and all that to, to work that up for y'all.
As always, thank you, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Next up, we have public hearing, special use permit, Montgomery County Auburn Park, and I see Ms. Hopkins coming forward. Good evening.
So as stated, we have a special use permit request to add lights at Auburn Park. The park is located here in the southwestern portion of the county, and this is a closer view. You can see Reiner Road, and then this is Meadow Creek. This is an aerial photo of the property. This is also the property that contains the Reiner Fire, Fire Center, so it is located here, and the park will wrap around in this area. This is the zoning map. It's currently zoned Agriculture A1. Residential R1 is to the south, that is the Cloverly zoning district there, and you can see the, the next phase that's currently being built here. So as stated, the property is located along Reiner Road. It does currently provide location for the Reiner Volunteer Fire Department. We do require a special use permit to allow a lighted park in the A1 zoning district. The Auburn Plant Park is a planned capital improvement project, and it's currently in the review by our staff. They have gone back to the engineer, and they are looking at changing a couple of the sizes, maybe of, of one or more of the fields. We're waiting to hear that back. That does not impact this request as it would not impact the lighting. The, the park, the field would still need to be lit regardless of size, and the one they're looking at lighting is not next to one of the adjoining property owners if it, if it's increased. So if the location of the lights move a little bit, it, it would not have any additional impact. So in 2022, we just approved a similar SUP application for Creed Fields Park. This was done after the fact, so in that case, that park was built, and then we went back in and added lights. Since we're currently in the planning phase, we wanted to go ahead and get this before you so they can actually put in these lights when they're building the park, and we don't have to go back out. The Auburn Park will have six multipurpose fields, four fields for softball, baseball, coach pitch tee ball, and then two for the fo, for the football, soccer, lacrosse, and other activities. There will also be restroom facilities, a large covered shelter, a playground, and then a walking trail. So this is the current layout. Like I said, there might be some minor changes to this if one of the field sizes changes, but you can see these are the two fields here. There's another baseball, softball field here and here, and then the two large green triangles are the multipurpose fields for soccer, lacrosse, and football. This, of course, is the location of the Reiner Volunteer Risk, or Fire Department, rather. So this is the actual lighting plan. Each one of these black dots represents a place where a pole would be located around the field. And then these are your photos of the property. This is, looking back, you can see the Fire Department sign here, and then this is looking back towards Reiner. So we do propose the installation of lighting for the fields. It does consist of the following lights, 21 60-foot poles, 1 70-foot, and 8 80-foot poles, for a total of 144 downcast lighting fixtures. So additional lighting does create a safer place for our kids to play. All lights that are installed will be dark-skies friendly, and so what that means is it meets a certain number of conditions. Those are, they will be LED lights. They will only be on during use, so it won't be lit at times when they are not being used, and they will, they will be shielded downward to only light the area that's trying to be lit, so the field. Parks see their highest use during summer months, normally between May and August. The addition of the lighting will extend the available hours that the park can operate, and all park activities will conclude no later than 10:00 PM. That will be regulated by the Parks and Rec Department, and they will turn off those lights at that time. So the installation of lighting does extend the park, the hours that the park is available, so there could be some traffic produced from those games and things. However, VDOT has stated that there should not be any impacts and no additional items are needed for the entrance. The park also does not lie within a FEMA flood zone, and the existing land disturbance permits cover the, the coverage area. So this is the comprehensive plan. This area is defined as resource stewardship, and then these are your comprehensive plan goals that are met through this request. All of these goals are related to promoting recreation within the county and providing new community facilities. So this application is consistent with other recently approved lighted park requests. The lighting does enhance user experience and, and increases the park's availability. The lighting will be installed in a manner not to negatively impact the adjoining property owners. It does provide additional recreation opportunities, and we can extend the hours of the parks so it's able to be used. As we know, we are seeing a great number of demand for Parks and Rec, which is a good thing, but it does mean sometimes we have to extend the hours that our parks are in use so we can accommodate all the teams we have. Lighting would further enhance those programs and allow us to continue to serve additional children. So the Planning Commission did review this request. They recommended approval on a nine-to-o vote. The lighting shall be installed in general conformance with the plans submitted dated October 17, 2022, and the lighting shall comply with dark-sky friendly standards. That was their recommendation. We did have three speakers at the Planning Commission public hearing. Mostly, they were concerned with the size of the fields themselves and the location of the multi-use fields. One is close to a neighboring property, and then there were some questions about the status of the plan review. So the, we did not hear any specific comments related to the lighting. It was mostly about the size of the fields. Adjoining property owners have been notified. We have placed the public sign on the property, and we did run the legal ads in the news messenger. We have had a couple of calls in the office, mostly just seeking additional information or to discuss the size or the use of the fields. You may have some here that have additional comments or concerns. And with that, I will take any questions from the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. We'll go around and see. I'll start off Supervisor Bone.
No questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Demots?
Just one question, and I might have to get with our Director of Parks and Rec to answer this. So when we did the Creed Fields lights, they were actually programmable from the office here in the Government Center. Are, are we looking at the similar, same type of setup where?
Yes, we are.
From this office, we can program when they turn on and off? I think that's great. That's all that I had. That's the only question I had about anything. Thank you for your presentation.
Supervisor King?
Just one, the size of the field, the gentleman come to us and talk to us about it, too. Is that, you're talking about moving them up to, what, 80-foot or something basis?
I don't speak baseball, so I can't tell you the exact size.
I know, I know his.
I can tell you the field they are looking at, and that is the softball field, too. That is the one that they're looking at extending the size. It has to do to accommodating children, I believe, and I think Brad's here who might be able to help.
14 to 18?
13 to 18 boys.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at changing one of the fields from a 225-foot fence down the line to a 300-foot, 350-foot in the center with 90-foot base pass to accommodate traditional baseball-sized field, 90-foot bases, and 60-foot pitching mound.
All right. Thank you.
He speaks baseball.
Supervisor Fitchikowski?
No questions.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No questions.
Vice Chair Biggs?
No questions.
And Bree, no questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will open up the public hearing for those, and the citizens that like to speak. I didn't, did not have anyone signed up to speak on this matter, but if anyone would like to speak on this public hearing regarding the Montgomery County Auburn Park lighting, you'll have four minutes to address the Board. If you'll begin by stating your name and address.
James Michael Wright.
Sir, just come forward, and you'll have four minutes. When the yellow light blinks, you'll have one-minute warning, and you'll tell us your name and address.
Okay. James Michael Wright, 3561 Reiner Road. I'm immediately adjacent to the Reiner Fire Department. I'm concerned about the, I've never been around these downcast lights that you're talking about, but they're 80-foot poles that are going to be on that big athletic field on the backside of that property, or, you know, right on my property. So I'm concerned about the lights. I'm concerned about noise. I don't know how many crowds you're going to have, but noise and trash. If people are, have any kind of refreshments and stuff, they trash out the property, and the county doesn't keep it clean, it's going to end up blowing on my property. So I'm concerned about that. And what, if anything, in the future, if we do see that the light's spilling over, lighting up my backyard, am I going to be able to come back and do, you know, request a change of how it's set up? And how many, you said, is it definitely going to shut off at 10 o'clock at night? No, no ifs, ands, or buts? Okay.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address for this public hearing? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close this public hearing. Next up, public address. Guidelines. Public address sheet, sign-up sheet was out front. Each citizen will have four minutes to address the, the Board. Each speaker speaking as either an individual or representative. All comments must be directed to the Chair or other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. You'll begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to the supervisors with the Board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in any personal attacks, use of profanity, or abuse of language, or debate with the audience, and not address the supervisors. So I have two names that I'll call up first, and then if anyone else wants to come forward, they may. The first up is Matthew Ventress.
Good evening. Matthew Ventress, Christiansburg, Virginia. Thank you for this time to speak. The upcoming budget's tax cuts are at a point where they are the definition of one cutting off one's nose to spite one's face. You advertise cutting taxes from 89 cents to 73 cents, but you cut even deeper to 70. I'm not one who enjoys paying high taxes, but I also am intelligent enough to appreciate the things that make Montgomery County a great place to live. I hold in high regard the men and women in our country and our county that wear a badge and protect the families of Montgomery County. I respect any person willing to risk their life, run into a burning home, or deliver medical attention to the families of Montgomery County. I've had the privilege to witness the miracles that happen every day in Montgomery County schools. Why did four of you vote at the last meeting to defund some of the things that make Montgomery County Montgomery County? Our county administrator, Craig Meadows, seems to be a reasonable man and does a great job for Montgomery County citizens. Did he advise the Board of Supervisors to cut the tax rate so drastically? In a time where building cost has increased tremendously, you voted to reduce the special contingencies that essentially cuts into the investing in the county's future school and cap, county capital. What happens to property values in Montgomery County when you vote to cut so deeply into capital funding? In a time when school shootings have sadly become commonplace, is it truly the best time to vote to cut some of the time, some of the school resource officers? In a time when the cost for college education continues, continues to rise, some of you voted to reduce the ACE program funding by $50,000. How many kids in Auburn, Christiansburg, or Shawsville areas will not be able to attend community college now? In a time when the cost of living continues to go up, you cut down the opportunities for our county's children by reducing the funding for our schools' operating funds by $1,547,287. You can't say you support our schools, our children, and their families if you vote to essentially defund their future. How will that negatively affect the around 1,800 Montgomery County school employees, much of them live in this county, too, the nearly 10,000 of Montgomery County's children and their families? How will these cuts affect the single-parent Christiansburg teacher who was counting on her raise to help pay for the growing cost of groceries? What happens to the Auburn school cafeteria worker when her position is cut? What happens to the Shawsville custodian when the funding isn't there for their job anymore? What happens to the Blacksburg area bus driver when their route is cut? What happens to our county's school employees and their families when your tax cuts cut their livelihood? What happens to the county's children and their future when class sizes go up and the opportunities go down? Before you voted to cut taxes so deeply, did you do the research on how it would affect Montgomery County's citizens with the cost to build, eat, and essentially live continue to rise? Some of you voted to invest in our, wait a minute, some of you voted to not invest, not invest, in our county's future. Why did you vote at the last meeting to not invest in Montgomery County's future? Thank you for this time.
Next up, I have a James Wright.
James Michael Wright, 3561 Reiner Road. I want to, this was a question that I put on a slide that I did before the Board of Equalization. When y'all built the fire station next to my property, you put a new fence up that was supposed to be between our property lines, but you put the fence up first and then surveyed the property. Now that this survey's been done, and I've been out and looked at everything that affects my property value, the corner stakes for the survey appear to be about a foot and a half or two feet over from where the a half or two feet over from where the fence is. So the question I put on my slide to the Board of Equalization was, whose fence is it, mine or the county's? So I would like someone to come out from the county and get with me so we can figure out, is that a corner plant, pan that was placed, which I think it is? And what are we going to do about the fact that you put your fence on my property? Thank you.
That concludes the signup sheet, but if any citizen would like to come forward, you'll have four minutes to address the board. You'll state your name and address.
My name's Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. You know, I promise myself I'm trying not to give misinformation. In a recent meeting, I said Dr. Breagan applied for a job in a hundred and ninety, within a hundred and twenty days down in Miami, down Brevard County, I mean, Boward County, and it ended up being Brevard County, Cocoa Beach. So he applied for a job at Cocoa Beach, not Miami. I passed out some stuff for you guys, you know, to my budgets and so forth. And so in the last five, last five years, you guys have increased the school budget by ten-point-five million dollars, okay, the operating budget. You increased the capital budget by eleven-point-two million dollars, okay? You also find on that sheet enrollment numbers. So in two thousand nineteen or eighteen, we had ninety-four-hundred students. Now we have ninety-five-hundred students. So no growth in six years, seven years, there's no student growth. Homescores now, that, that, those students have grown, went from five-oh-seven to seven-fourty-eight. I didn't get this year's because their numbers are off on there. And also, what's also amazing to, to all this money is the average cost to teach a student in Montgomery County. In two thousand twelve, it was ninety-nine-hundred dollars. Today, it's over fourteen thousand dollars to send, we're paying taxes to send our, send a kid to Montgomery County school system. You know, the Board of Supervisors did their job. You guys debated the issue and made a decision that works for the entire county. MCPS increased their budget by two-point-five million dollars. No money was taken from MCPS. MCPS must make decisions on how to spend additional two-point-five million dollars. Student population did not increase. Revenue neutral provides individual freedom. The MCPS should be held accountable on how they spend our tax dollars. No one is stopping the donations. If you guys want us to give money to the schools, you go right ahead. Doesn't mean we have to, okay? So again, we talked about the actual two-point-five-million-dollar increase is close to five-percent revenue increase. There's no increase in population and a close to two-percent decrease in population since two thousand and nineteen. Twenty-twenty-three, this will make the eighth year in a row that MCPS has gotten pay raises. Starting pay, starting teacher pay ranks second in our district. CHS renovations cost closer three times greater than Salem. You'll find in there as well, I created, I got a letter from the, from Andy Hall, who is the CFO and project manager for Salem High School. Their project was thirty-five million, not ninety-five million. So the question is, is inflation three-hundred percent? You know, Dr. Breagan got a twenty-five-thousand-dollar pay raise of a previous superintendent without being vetted. School board members said they brought him in to land the teachers' union. I didn't say that, they said it. Now, Dr. Breagan is going straight to the union for permission to change, i.e., the school calendar is his first example. He goes straight to the union and not to the frigging teachers or anybody else. School board paid thirty-thousand dollars for outside firm versus going to the BSBA. Two high schools operated at service and capacity, so add students by additional costs. Our student ratio is fifteen to one. You know, like I said, the cost is fourteen-thousand dollars for public school, and you can go to private school for forty-two to seventy-six-hundred dollars. Okay? And on page three, you'll find that our local revenue stream mirrors state money, okay? So we're getting, we're giving the same percentage, the same increase year after year for add budget, I mean, not for add budget, for budget, for operating budget for the school system. You know, we've got a thirty-percent increase in cost per pupil. And so again, thank you for debating the tax increase last week, and thank you for keeping it revenue neutral. You know, I want to also to drive the South Main Street, right across the street from the Bojangles, that one block area. Now there's five businesses advertising, they need, looking for renters, and so-
Thank you, Ms. Beard.
You know, businesses are leaving Blacksburg because of too costly.
Would anyone else like to come forward to address the board?
My name is Wayman Pike from Ryner, Virginia. On prior occasions, I, along with others, spoke, both pro and con, concerning the proposed seventy-three-cent tax hike after our recent real estate reappraisals. What I failed to realize at the time was that some of our local boards seems to be as entrenched in their ideas as our state and national representatives. It is my humble opinion that our democratic republic could not have survived for more than two-hundred years without some form of give and take between governing parties or opposing views. Even after wars are fought, the opposing sides normally sit down to discuss terms of peace with some give and take for both sides. If that were not the case, how else could you reason away the fact that the United States of America has spent billions in the assistance of rebuilding Japan, Germany, and other countries after the end of hostilities? Part of the problem that is facing our county right now is the fact that our representatives in Richmond are so sure that it should be their way or the highway. This has resulted so far in the failure of a state budget to be passed, resulting in, according to you, excuse me, your estimates, a one-point-three-million-dollar shortfall in our county operating budget. Our national leaders know better. My son serves as a sergeant in the United States Army Reserves, recently traveled to Fort Hood in Texas for a week of training. Since his return, his expenses haven't been paid because he was told there wasn't money in the account for his reimbursement. How have we not progressed but regressed to get to our present state? If one side of this local board argued for a seventy-percent rate and the other for a seventy-three-cent rate, I, my naivete, believed that the parties would cooperate and try to reach a compromise solution, maybe somewhere between seventy-and-a-half to seventy-two-and-a-half cents. However, there seemed to be very little consensus of any idea of compromise. The process reminded me of my days in elementary school. We'd all go out to play at recess. All the most talented athletes somehow ended up on the same team with the remainder left to do the best they could in the face of overwhelming odds. I expected more from our elected officials, adults, each and every one, who maybe, because of party affiliation, have forgotten the history of our nation. Sure, I understand that majority rules, but even those in the majority need to listen to the minority. If the thinking is that minorities, with their ideas and needs, do not matter, where would we be? I can honestly tell you, with our ideas and needs do not matter, where would we be? We wouldn't be where we are today because minorities of the day years ago convinced our elected leaders that the status quo was no longer tenable. And as a first person of color to attend Christiansburg Primary School, because my mother had the audacity to petition the school superintendent at that time for the opportunity, I would probably not be standing here tonight addressing this body. So I end by saying, going forward, let us look to history to prepare ourselves for the future. Because that has been famously quoted, those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. Believe me when I say that there are many aspects of my younger years I not only do not wish to repeat, but have no desire for others who come after me to experience either. Please, let's go back to governing by cooperating. It's too late for this budget cycle, but let's remember that governing for the few is not the same as governing for all. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close public address. Addendum.
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay. Next up, items of consent.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
New business. First up, special use permit, Montgomery County Park lighting at Auburn Fields.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Up next, supplemental appropriation, Montgomery, Montgomery County Public School System.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have, I do have a question if Ms. Whitaker, Dr. Whitaker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Appropriation of a little, a little over two-point-one-million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is from a reimbursement?
Yes, ma'am. There are two different reimbursements. One is from insurance. As you know, we had some significant weather issues over the holiday at winter, and so that is, you know, we pay it out of our operating, and then they reimburse us. So that's one chunk of it is from the weather damage that we had. And then the other is S R reimbursement. So again, we have to pay it out of operating, and then they reimburse us the funds after we've spent them.
And what if, since they're from federal grants, that reimbursement, what is the guarantee that you would get, what would happen if you didn't get that reimbursement?
Well, we would, we would be in a deficit because we plan on those expenses. So we take that reimbursed, you know, we take that grant, we send it, we get it approved federally, and so the federal government owes us those funds. And so we seek that reimbursement from them, and we've spent the funds on things that were allocated to other items to spend it on S R in advance. So we, you know, Ms., Ms., oh, Ms. Blain, Ms. Hill had mentioned to me that I think sometimes you're able to, in advance here in the county, have funds where you can spend and then get it reimbursed, but we don't have that. So we have to spend our operating funds and then get it reimbursed once we, once we have the receipts for that.
And, but again, there, is there always a guarantee that you would get that reimbursement?
Yes.
So there is?
Yes. Yes, they allocate how much funds we get. And so within those funds that we've shared with you, all the application and what we spend everything on, we get those expenditures approved beforehand. We get them approved, then we spend the money, and then we seek the reimbursement for it.
Is there a reason that you wouldn't appropriate, appropriate that at that time, then?
Well, we just never have because we, that was what Ms. Hill had mentioned to me, that sometimes you all do that. That's something that we've never done, but would certainly benefit us. You know, that if you all were amenable to that, that once we get those awards, because it's lots of funds, it's all of our title, we have five title programs. It's a lot of money, though, all of our special education, then the S R grants are federal grants. So all of those are federally funded, that they tell us in advance how much we would get, and then we spend them and get the reimbursement on it.
But you spent, so make sure I'm, understand, so you're spending it from the operating funds?
Yes.
And then those operating funds, since those are a budget, wouldn't have to be-
We got to get the money back to, yeah, to spend it on the things that, you know, that we need to, to be in within that budget.
Wouldn't it be better housekeeping if you knew it, you were getting it to go ahead and appropriate it, like the county?
You know, I can't speak for Dr. Breagan, but I do think so, because then what happens is we get pushed to the end of the year, and we, and we get that year-end money, but we, we had to, we had to spend all year long. So if we were able to do it that way, you know, of course, if that's what the board wanted to do, I do think that it makes sense. Some of the grants would be a little different, like, for example, federal Title II grants, they can roll over multiple years. So you probably wouldn't want to allocate all of that in one year because we don't even find out till September what they're giving us. So we don't even have the actual budget numbers before we have to start paying people out of it. So that, that one itself might be different, but I think there would be some good, good thinking behind doing that in the future if you all would agree to that.
Sometimes it just gets confusing if you're spending money that's coming out of operating, but it wasn't actually designated for operating. It could, you could be a deficit if you've already spent that money and it didn't-
And it didn't come. Yeah.
Exactly.
We were very, very careful with the S R, you know, I've shared, we went above and beyond because I did not want that to happen. I didn't want someone to say, yeah, we think a project would get approved, and then they ask a question later, and we've already spent the money. So we are trying to be very, very specific and careful about that to make sure they will reimburse us, but it is easier if it's right in the beginning, sure. We would still get reimbursed from them, though. Like, they won't give us the money until we can prove to them we've spent it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for being here this evening and answering that question.
Absolutely.
Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up, Shawsville Rescue Squad dissolution. Let me bring that up.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let me go ahead and read that resolution. Resolution, removing Shawsville Volunteer EMS Incorporated as a designated emergency response agency and recognizing the dissolution of Shawsville Volunteer EMS Incorporated as an emergency medical response agency within the county of Montgomery, Virginia. Whereas Shawsville Volunteer EMS Incorporated, also known as Shawsville Volunteer Rescue Squad Incorporated, together referred to as Shawsville Volunteer EMS, is a volunteer emergency medical service organization. And whereas in the Montgomery County Emergency Medical Service Response Plan, Shawsville Volunteer EMS is a recognized designated emergency response agency by the county, whose primary service areas include the unincorporated communities of Ellison, Lafayette, Shawsville, and the other unincorporate areas of eastern Montgomery County, including Allegheny Springs, Bradshaw, and Ironto. And whereas the county of Montgomery has been notified by Shawsville Volunteer EMS that their agency will no longer respond to emergency response calls in the county, and that the Board of Directors of Shawsville Volunteer EMS is in the process of dissolving the agency as a legal entity. And whereas due to Shawsville Volunteer EMS no longer being able to respond to calls, and that the agency is currently in the process of dissolving as a legal entity, the county administrator recommends that the Board of Supervisors take formal action to remove Shawsville Volunteer EMS as a recognized designated emergency response agency in the County Emergency Medical Services Plan and terminate Shawsville Volunteer EMS's authority to provide emergency medical response within the county of Montgomery, Virginia. And whereas for the reasons stated above, the Board of Supervisors of the county of Montgomery, Virginia, find it advisable to formally remove Shawsville Volunteer EMS as a recognized designated emergency response agency in the Montgomery County Emergency Medical Services Response Plan and terminate Shawsville Volunteer EMS's authority to provide emergency medical response within the county of Montgomery, Virginia. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the county of Montgomery, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors hereby formally removes Shawsville Volunteer EMS as a recognized designated emergency response agency in the county, in the County Emergency Medical Services Response Plan, and terminate Shawsville Volunteer EMS's authority to provide emergency medical response within the county of Montgomery, Virginia. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors expresses its gratitude and thanks to all those individuals throughout the many years who have volunteered their time and efforts to serve in Shawsville Volunteer, to serve in the Shawsville Volunteer EMS Agency, and provide lifesaving services to the citizens in the eastern portion of Montgomery County, Virginia. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby directs that the Montgomery County Fire and EMS Department assume responsibilities under the County Emergency Medical Services Response Plan in the area previously covered by the Shawsville Volunteer EMS, and make provisions for any volunteers of Shawsville Volunteer EMS to serve as volunteers for the Montgomery County Fire and EMS Department if they are able, qualified, and willing to serve. Any discussion? Supervisor Fitchakowski?
Yeah, I would just like to add that, you know, and we have discussed this many times, that volunteerism is something that is affecting the entire country, not just eastern Montgomery County. And the Shawsville Rescue Squad has been in operation for many decades, sometimes under different names, but they have really provided great service to the citizens of eastern Montgomery, and we definitely want to recognize that. But especially the fact that any volunteers that wish to continue, they have that option of volunteering with the county fire and EMS. That, that provision is going to stay in there. So there's still a opportunity for young men and women who want to pursue some kind of medical work and have the required training, they're going to be welcomed. And, and I think, I think we've already showed that. So I just want to say that it's very unfortunate to see an agency like this go away- away, but, um, it's, um, a victim of the times, and, uh, we're moving forward, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchukowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Proclamation, R S V P fiftieth anniversary.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say this is a huge testament, um, for a fiftieth year anniversary, and we are excited to celebrate with them, and we appreciate the volunteers.
You'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fitchukowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, reports. County Attorney.
Um, yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make the board aware that the, that the Board of Supervisors were notified by the Electoral Board of a, um, of a, uh, emergency polling change that'll have to happen, uh, for the upcoming Democratic primary, which is scheduled for June twentieth. Um, the precinct that's being affected is C five, uh, and the polling place is Church of the Brethren. Um, and the problem is, they were, they're going through a remodeling and construction, and it's gonna, um, they're not gonna have it done in time for the primary. And as a result of that, they, um, the, the, uh, polling place would not be able to comply with the ADA requirements. So the Registrar, um, Electoral Board has come up with a, a, what they call an emergency polling change just for that election, June twentieth. Uh, and it'll be used, that, that, they'll be using the Christiansburg Church of Christ, which is on South Franklin Street. And it's my understanding that's just a few minutes from the Brethren Church. So, um, this is not something that the Board, um, has, takes any action on. It, but the Electoral Board is required to notify you of, of this change, and the change has been approved by the State Board of Elections. So, uh, the Registrar will be sending out notifications in the mail to, uh, any, uh, registered voters who vote in the C five precinct. So if you have any questions, um, you know, feel free to let me know, or even Connie, so.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Thank you. County Administrator.
Due to the late hour this evening, I have nothing to add to the county attorney's report this evening. Thank you.
Very good. All right. Supervisors, uh, Supervisor Shep-, uh, Shepherd?
No report.
Supervisor Bone?
No report.
Supervisor Demontz?
No report.
Supervisor Fitchukowski?
Uh, I would just like to say, uh, again, about, um, our, uh, road viewer's tour that we took on Saturday, um, we couldn't have asked for any better weather, and I really felt that it was a benefit for us to have insight in what other supervisors are dealing with in their districts. It gives us a, a better idea of, of what direction we should go in. So I really appreciated those that showed up, and, uh, can't wait till next year.
Supervisor King?
No report, but I would like to mention to the board members, and maybe we can discuss this at our next board meeting, if you hadn't seen the school board meeting from last Tuesday, I would encourage you to watch that, because I wasn't very happy with some of the words that was said in that meeting.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Um, I don't have a report tonight, thank you. Very good. Just a few things. First of all, um, wanted to say congratulations to the Radford University Class of two thousand twenty-three. My daughter Kayla graduated, and I missed the road tour with, uh, Mr. Clark this week because of that, but also wanted to congratulate Virginia Tech as they have their upcoming graduation this weekend, and to all of our graduates that will be, um, from the high schools that will be graduating the end, end of this month. And also wanted to, um, say just, uh, this week, next week, May fourteenth through the